Think I need some coffee.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session for Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The time now is seven P M. I will turn to the clerk to read, uh, to go through roll call. Um, after I hit you, you know, we should just hit the microphones ahead of time.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present in establishing a quorum are council members Foulcher, Kenny, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough. Okay.
One moment.
Oh, and, uh, Councilmember Gamble just joined the attendees list. I'm promoting him now.
All right. Councilmember Gamble, we're going to move you into the panelist list. Uh, we did hear from Councilmember Hanford last week, but he would not be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. And Councilmember Gamble has joined us in the panel list. Uh, Councilmember Fisher, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to go into public comments now. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening and you're in the room, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody. Um, if, uh, you are online and you'd like to, uh, speak to the council, please raise your hand in the Zoom app or hit star nine if you're on the phone. All right, seeing them, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be Councilmember Reports. We'll go ahead and start off down on the end. Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Scarborough, any Councilmember to report? Nothing to report. Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford's not here this evening. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to let everyone know that we have Monroe Historical Society event coming up March eighteenth at the Public Library. It's about the importance and establishment of, uh, riverboats on the local rivers. It starts at, uh, one P M. We have a business meeting and at one thirty, uh, the presentation starts and the presenters are two authors who have written a book called, uh, Steamboats on the Snowqualmy. So I'd like to invite everyone to come down and, um, learn more about our local history. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Foulcher. Go ahead.
Um, nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Go ahead.
Uh, nothing to report.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Gamble.
I'm good.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on now to City Administrator Report, uh, Extended Agenda. Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking forward to March fourteenth, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. We will include approval of minutes from our last meeting in December. The regular business for our first meeting of the year, election of chair, and then the two thousand and twenty-three work plan. And then we will have an update, um, on where we're at with our legislative priorities for two thousand and twenty-three. Moving forward then to the regular business meeting for March fourteenth. Uh, we will have an announcement and presentation from the, um, municipal court. So Judge Ness will be here providing an update on, uh, the two thousand and twenty-two annual report for the court. Under consent agenda, we have the regular, um, approval of, um, our accounts payable payroll meeting minutes. And then our executive lease agreement for our temporary office space during the municipal campus construction. An authorization for the mayor to sign our two thousand and twenty-three Skyhawks Sports Campus Agreement. And then a motion to change the March twenty-eighth meeting into a business meeting. So we'll have a motion under City Administrator Report for that just in a moment. Um, a public hearing to surplus, um, and lease, uh, resolution for the food banks, uh, for the food bank. And then, uh, final action on that as well. Under new business, we have economic, um, development of board appointments and an ordinance for the municipal campus bonds, um, first and final reading. Uh, and then reports from departments will be parks, economic development, human services, H R and I T. For the meeting on the twenty-eight, twenty-first, excuse me. Uh, we'll have a finance and human resources committee meeting, also approval of minutes, election of chair. Uh, a meeting, a media communications update from Ben Worthen, and then the two thousand and twenty-two annual report from Finance Director Becky Hassert. Under unfinished business, we have bond scenarios. So that'll be for the finance committee. And then, um, the regular meeting, we're talking about, uh, a cancellation for that meeting. Oh, excuse me, not for the twenty-first. My apologies. Next. Excellent. Uh, I do have a, just a brief update to under City Administrator Reports, uh, for our, um, communications. Uh, we hired a communications firm, um, Mojo. And we just wanted to provide the council with a quick update on, um, where we're at with that contract. Uh, Mo- the Mojo team is led by, um, Joy Johnson, who, Johnson, who is the C E O. Excuse me, and then Marie Jensen, who has been, um, working with city staff on kind of our, our day-to-day communications coordination. Um, Mojo has been taking a comprehensive look at how the city communicates and is providing some expertise and recommendations. I know that city staff have been, um, working very closely. So you'll be seeing some of that work, um, come forward, particularly around kind of the municipal campus, um, move, uh, and then other items related to, um, outreach, the transportation benefit district. For example, they're also working on a plan to make sure that our residents understand the benefits of the transportation benefit district as we move into, um, a renewal of that in February of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, they're also, uh, taking a look at editing some of our mailers and flyers, um, reports and content development for print and digital communications. Um, working with our staff on best practices, so making sure that we have consistency in our communications. Um, both on our website and on our Facebook page, um, doing some training, uh, with our staff around those items. And then as a part of that work, Mojo Strategies is, uh, going to be conducting some interviews with key community members to learn about their experiences and their opinions of Monroe, um, and how we're communicating, um, with our constituents. So uh, more will be coming on that as well. They're reaching out particularly to, um, the school district, business organizations, major employers. Um, we're trying to make sure that we have a diverse group of people that we're talking to, to ensure that we're doing the best job that we can, um, to make sure that our communications are relevant to the people that we're trying to reach and that we're kind of using all of the tools available, um, for us in that toolbox. So, um, we anticipate that, um, Mojo Strategies, um, will continue to be on contract through, um, two thousand and twenty-three and then possibly longer as well. I think one of the things that we're hoping for with this contract is really identifying, um, where the gaps are in our communications. And then, um, determining, um, if we wanted to bring somebody on potentially full-time to do communications for us, what that scope of work might look like. So, uh, anything else, Mayor, that you want to add? I know you've been working closely, um, both with Joy and Marie, um, and have been using them, um, on occasion as needed as well.
Yeah, I'm just sharing with the council that, um, they're doing a really great job. Uh, they're a very, um, pragmatic, um, firm. Uh, they've, they've got a lot of really pragmatic experience, so it's not just sort of theoretical. Um, they've been doing a really good job of helping, helping us think through potential. You know, how, how we communicate on different things that have come up. And so without getting into too much detail there, um, it's nice having them as a sounding board for us to talk about how to, how to communicate different things that might be sensitive with the community. I think they're also doing a really good job with how they've prepared the survey that, uh, that, um, Administrator Knight just mentioned. And, uh, yeah, if anybody's got any questions or anything, please let us know. But I, I'm impressed with, uh, with the two right now. Thank you. Um, anything for?
Uh, no, other than I would just add that both, uh, Joy and Marie have extensive experience, um, working with cities. Both of them came out as communication coordinator. Marie's background and experience, um, has been with the city of Woodinville, Kirkland, and Bellevue most recently. And, um, Joy has worked for Sammamish and, um, other east side cities as well. So it's been great to have, I think, that that breadth and, um, depth of experience, particularly at the city level.
And, and just, just underscoring what I meant by pragmatic, that, uh, what Deborah just said is exactly what I meant is they've got real city experience and it's, it's not just people that have done things like as a P R firm or, or something like that. So I think, I think they're doing great. Anything else, uh, Administrator Knight?
Uh, just one last item. I just wanted to give, uh, kudos to Katie Darrow and, um, to McKenna Olson. Uh, they worked to put together our most recent issue of Choose Monroe Magazine. I know, um, from talking to, uh, people who live here in town, that they've seen, um, the magazine, uh, hit their mailboxes. People have been reading it and providing really positive comments about it again, um, on our social media. So uh, just wanted to give a shout out to Katie and McKenna for the work that they did pulling that together.
Thank you. All right. Questions or comments? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Can I get a clarification on, uh, when you said, uh, consent agenda for the fourteenth? Motion to change twenty-eighth meeting to a business meeting. Didn't we cancel the twenty-eighth meeting last week?
After the meeting last week, uh, staff requested that we changed the meeting from setting session on the twenty-first to the business meeting because they got some, I didn't think like sample.
Any other questions, Councilmember, Councilmember Scarborough, or did you want to make a motion since you've, you have the floor, but I'll? Just a second. Let me turn on your, let me turn it, let me turn on your mic.
What color, what color would you like?
It's the right color now. So go ahead, Councilmember.
I guess you're looking for a motion to make the twenty-first meeting a regular session, like say.
There's a sample motion. It's the fourth bullet on the screen.
Motion to change three twenty-one meeting to a business meeting. Uh, move the change, uh, session to a business meeting and allow final.
Okay, so I understand that the motion is move to change the March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three study session to a business meeting and allow for final action. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I have a, a motion from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Foulcher. Any discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Anything further?
No, nothing further from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go into the mayor's, uh, report then. And that's okay. Um, that's okay. So, uh, a couple of things. One, um, I, uh, issued a proclamation for Irish American Heritage Month. It's there in your packets. Uh, Councilmember Gamble and I had spoken about that at the end of last week's meeting. And so thank you, Councilmember Gamble, for following up with me on that. Uh, so, uh, congratulations and we're, uh, nice hat. Thank you very much. Um, and then you'll see the update for Monroe this week. They're in your packets. Um, there was, I think there still is, because I haven't seen it canceled yet, an A W C lobby day on March sixteenth. As of last week, they did not have a whole lot of people that had signed up for it and were debating whether or not they needed to cancel it. Um, I, for one, have not RSVP'd to it because I feel that I've been down there a few times this year and, uh, feel that our legislators know what I'm, know what my concerns are. So however, if any of the council members would like to go, please reach out to, uh, Deborah, me, or Jody. Um, and we can follow up with A W C. If you're interested in attending, I would suggest you let us know this evening. Um, or let us know first thing tomorrow, uh, as, as of last week, they didn't have enough people and we're considering, uh, canceling it. So feel free to, to let us know this evening after the meeting or, uh, contact us, uh, early tomorrow. Um, last thing, I just want to share how much I appreciate, um, the work that we're doing around, uh, the legislative advocacy this year. Uh, we, I, I think that the firm that we have right now is doing a really stellar job. Uh, we're getting reports out on Thursday evening or very early Friday morning. Um, and I, the staff is doing a stellar job with, uh, reviewing the material when they come, when the material comes in. Um, I think we've got a really good rhythm this year that really we should be repeating in future years. It's keeping us really up to date on different bills. Um, it's allowed me to, uh, identify things that I thought would be of concern, like the cannabis bill that we discussed, I think, last week. Um, where I think they were issues that we may have missed in, in previous years. So I, I'm really impressed with the way that our entire team, not just the government affairs consultants are, but also Deborah and our S L T. And, um, I appreciate all the work that other staff members are doing to support that as well. So uh, just sharing that. If anybody's got any concerns about that process, please let me know. Um, from my perspective, things are going really well. Uh, I also really appreciate, uh, Senator Hawkins. You'll see in your mailboxes that, um, and he had contacted me before sending that out. Uh, he sent out a letter to, to everybody in our community talking about State Route five-two-two. We haven't had that sort of proactive communication in the past and, um, uh, especially for somebody that lives on the east side of the mountains, where I was concerned about whether or not they would understand the importance of five-two-two, uh, for us. Uh, having him communicate like that with us, I, I think is really valuable and helps us educate our community that it's not Monroe that's going to build five-two-two, but it's the state. And, um, I, I think the fact that he's willing to, to be out there on the issue is, is admirable and I appreciate it. Also want to let the council know this evening that, uh, you'll see it in your email that I, uh, signed a contract and a local agreement this evening for, um, Blueberry. Uh, if you'll recall, uh, Councilmember and Representative Lowe, um, was able to get a hundred thousand dollars into the, um, county budget to share in the cost of the improvements to Blueberry Park. Um, so if you, uh, see him or happen to want to send him a, a thank you, I, I think that would be appreciated. I did send him a thank you earlier this evening and, um, and I, I appreciate those sorts of partnerships that, uh, have not always been there in the past. Um, I think that's all I have to report this evening. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And this is the Monroe Water and Wastewater Treatment Plan. Oh, good. I was good with the tea. Okay. I was thinking not transportation, uh, treatment plan. Yes. Um, so I'm going to turn to, are you a manager or, okay, to manager? Landy, there we go. Oh, I need to hit your mic. Uh, to do that, you, you press your button and then I know which one you are. You, you are Becky Hassert this evening.
Good. She says there's a lot of power in Mojo from the seat, so I would try. Oh, oh, that's what I. Anyway, good evening. Uh, I have the, uh, opportunity this evening. I guess I give a few minutes to, to go over the, uh, engineering report. And, uh, I'm happy to, uh, to say it's completed. I'm happy to say that the Department of Ecology has approved it. And I'm happy with its content. It's a, it's a technical document. And so it doesn't have a lot of value to, to most people, but it has a lot of value to, to us, to you individually and collectively. Uh, it is the technical document that supports our capital facilities plan for the facility through the planning period. And that's through two thousand and forty. And so as I come to you with projects and, and that's, this is the document that supports those projects. And so, uh, anyway, it's, it's good that I get an opportunity to review that with you and I'll, I'll try to, try to be brief. Uh, I'll go at a pretty general, uh, level. Um, but please, uh, engage. If you have any questions, uh, I would appreciate those and, and we'll go through. Uh, we've been working on the engineering report for about, well, three and a half years now. There was a lot of components to it. Uh, you may recall, um, about two years ago, we came to council with an alternatives analysis. So you may recall some of that. I'm going to go over that again in a little bit in summary. Um, but anyway, that's what we'll be talking about. Uh, our current facility, uh, I think many of you or all of you have been there. Uh, if you haven't, I apologize, but, uh, um, our staff has been very successful, uh, over the years. Uh, obviously in the last twenty years, we've, uh, received several awards for compliance, which, uh, you know, was, it was a big thing. We, our first award was in two thousand and four. The city had not, uh, received that award up until that point. We've had a, a great record since then. In addition to, uh, our success in operations, we've also, uh, achieved several projects with efficiency, uh, that have made the facility what it is today. And, uh, we're being, we're proud of that. Why the engineering report? Uh, our current utility systems plan that was completed in two thousand and fifteen uh, identified the, the need for more detailed study of the facility. That, uh, comp plan, it did look at the treatment plant, but not at the level that, that it was needed in what we achieved here in this report. In addition to the recommendations from the utility systems plan, some new items are affluent pH requirements. We're changing in our current permit. Some risks associated with our current biosolage management practices and our increased flows with growth. And so those, those issues really triggered the need for this, for this report. Uh, at the bottom there, uh, in one of our, uh, project goal, uh, meetings, a, a successful project is defined as one of the provides a roadmap to the efficient, achievable, reliable, and sustainable compliance. And that was our, that was our objective in, in this report. Uh, our methodology, how, how we work through the report, how do we get the information? Uh, baseline evaluation of the existing facility. Uh, the, the facility had a, has a, uh, a, a maximum amount or a capacity, if you will. And so that the engineers look at basically what the treatment plant can do now. We looked at existing conditions. Uh, it's kind of like when you buy a new vehicle and it has a, a mile per gallon rating. Um, that's just a calculation. How you drive that car may change, uh, you know, how, how that vehicle operates economy-wise. And so we looked at the, at the facility and its baseline evaluation and determined what it can do and where it was at currently. Now, identification of data that improves, where the improvements are necessary, that essentially we looked at where there's deficiencies in the facility. If the plant is made up of different components and, and we looked at each of those components and saw where if it's equipment obsolescence or age or just a pipe wasn't big enough, where are the deficiencies, uh, moving forward? Uh, we looked at, uh, solutions. When we identified those deficiencies, what are possible solutions? Uh, concepts and feasibility of those solutions. How is it going to work? Anything can be built, but how can it be done in our footprint and, and reasonably done? And then submission of the final engineering report to the Department of Ecology, which was done and, uh, Ecology approved that report in November of twenty-two. Are there any questions so far?
I don't see any. Go ahead.
So when we identified the, the deficiencies, the engineers, we developed a series of capital projects to identify and, and resolve those, those efficiencies moving forward. They're numbered C I P one through six. Um, the C I P one was to address the pH on the affluent and the new permit, the new, uh, permit limits. That project has been completed and we're successful in doing that. C I P two and C I P three address the, the liquid stream, if you will. That's the biological and the secondary processes to address primarily the nitrogen limits that are pending. C I P four and C I P five address our biosolids or a solid treatment train. Uh, I mentioned before, the, um, our current biosolage management strategy has some risks to it. Uh, it also has, we take our biosolids, a class B material. We haul it, uh, by a contractor to Eastern Washington to wheat ground. And it's identified now that the, those, those fields that we ground is locking up the phosphor. So it's not a sustainable solution for years down the road. So we're trying to identify other alternatives that, that don't have a solid, the biosol is moving mountains. And then C I P six is really just addressing hydraulic issues as growth comes to the city. So this slide identifies the projects that I just, uh, talked about there, but it has dollar figures. It has a total project cost and then a twenty, twenty-year lifecycle cost. So when we address and look at these projects, a, a, the infrastructure, for example, may cost less, but the lifecycle cost, the operational cost, the maintenance may have a higher cost than maybe a, a infrastructure selection that has a, a less operating cost. And those are pretty significant numbers. Um, and if there's any questions regarding that, Director Hassard is here. Hopefully she can assist with that.
Thanks, John.
No problem. Thanks for coming. Uh, the, uh, C I P two and C I P three, these were two alternatives that were identified for the liquid stream stage. We, uh, talked about this at the council meeting, uh, some time ago. Uh, C I P two essentially, uh, utilizes our existing technology or exists, existing process. It just essentially means more tanks. And so to implement C I P two, it would have to go outside our existing footprint and that would have impact to our local community. It's a, an effective process. Uh, it's, again, it's the process we're utilizing now, but it would just to accommodate the growth that the cities will see and the hydraulic flows, we essentially just need more tanks. Uh, C I P three, uh, would incorporate a M B R, a membrane bioreactor treatment process. That's a fairly new process, probably within the last fifteen years, but it's not very uncommon. It's, um, there's several facilities locally that are using the M B R process. The, the Brightwater Facility, excuse me, in King County on Highway nine is an M B R process. Uh, Duval has the M B R process, Lake Stevens. It's a very common process and it generates or it makes a very, very high caliber affluent. It's a tertiary, uh, treatment level, meaning that water can be used for reuse, for irrigation and, and other uses, but it's a very high quality. You can see next to the, each of the C I P identified there, those are the, uh, initial infrastructure or construction costs, and then the operating cost of the twenty-year lifecycle cost next to each of those, uh, C I Ps. At the council meeting, council selected and was the recommendation for C I P three, uh, moving forward. That selection or that specific project would keep all of the improvements within the existing footprint. Uh, and so that was a big impact. Uh, the cost certainly. But looking ahead, uh, the, the level of the water quality that this process generates, the, the restrictions on our affluent isn't going to get any less. And with that foresight and generating that high level of affluent is a, is a positive move forward. Uh, when those restrictions happen, we'll have a facility without forethought. We'll have a facility that will be more closely able to achieve and achieve those limits.
Manager Landy, we do have a question from Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Thank you, John. Um, so you're, you're saying that we picked C I Ps three instead of two because we could live within our footprint?
That was, that was one of the reasons and also the, uh, the treatment level.
Okay. And if we pick C I P two, you said we'd have to build more tanks.
Yeah. Go to the next slide. I think I have a, a diagram that kind of shows. I was hoping these would show up a little bit better, but you can see on C I P two, uh, the, the dark gray line is the existing footprint of this facility. And you can see what the recommended, recommended tank placement would be. It would impact the green wall along the ball field to the, to the north of the ball field there. One of the tanks, that whole green wall would need to come down. And then there would be some existing tankage or new tankage that would have to go outside the fence. There it is proposed in what I've called the roundabout of the park driveway, if you will. And so, um, you know, those are what was proposed. It doesn't necessarily mean those would be the exact locations. That is just what would be proposed. Hopefully having the least impact. But that was one of the main factors in the recommendations that we went with C I P three was the, the, the level of the quality of the water that it produced and the minimal impact to the local.
Any other questions, sir, for Manager Landy before he continues? All right, go ahead.
Uh, very good. Uh, next slide. So the other uh, deficiencies that were identified had to do with the solids or the biosolage treatment systems. Uh, currently the, the city, but we utilize what's called aerobic digesters. We generate a, what's called a class B sludge. It's not identified as a biosolage because we don't meet the treatment level. So we don't have adequate digestion capacity at our current facility. When our contract caller takes it to the weak ground, we meet treatment levels by incorporating it, incorporating it into the soil immediately. Um, there's other risks, the hauling of the truck. We have a contract hauler hauling our material over the mountains. Sometime, well, I made a, a little diagram of the number of trucks. Sometime well, I made a little diagram of the number of trucks. Those are, those are full size truckloads per month that are hauled over Stevens Pass to Douglas County onto wheat ground. It turns out it's about eighty five truckloads in a year. And each of those trucks are the big thirty two foot open bed side dump trailers that are hauling approximately thirty tons per trip. Uh, so there's there's risk in that. The other component I didn't write on here, I was trying to remember, uh, there's. That just the diesel use and the tractors and the trucks hauling. I think there's. Going to the recommended CIP five, which is a bio or class A dryer system. Reduces the CO two or the greenhouse gases. Four times, I believe, I think it's like almost a hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide each year. Would be eliminated without us hauling over the mountains. CIP five, the recommended alternative there, which is what council approved. Was to incorporate a class A biosolids drying process. It's a, it's a non-contact paddle dryer, the paddles. Have a superheated oil inside of them, it is fueled by natural gas. But that contact with the the water cake uh, generates, I brought some samples here. Uh, a a de-water, it's almost like a pelletized uh, fertilizer. But it's solids reduction, but most importantly, it's a treatment level that is much higher than what we have now. It has no restriction to public contact. And so we could utilize it on our parks, uh, local citizens could utilize it in their gardens. There's ways that we can market it and 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 use it as a benefit as a soil amendment local, so we'd be looking into that.
That's it's on the side of your monitor. I'm just kidding. I put it in your purse.
And I gave you my.
Um, are you prepared for a question? I've got Councilmember Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas, uh, two questions, when you talk about the wheat, is it fields? Are we hauling the sludge to wheat fields?
Field.
Okay.
Along Highway two in in the Manson area from, there's several fields, our contract caller has these several. Thousands of acres of winter wheat ground and that material that we comes off our belt press. Ends up to the DOC facility where we load those trucks, those trucks go over the pass. Uh, eight and a half or eight times a month over the pass and then those go right on to the fields. Where then within few days that material is incorporated into the soil by discs.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other question I had was the trucking firm that we employ to haul uh, this material. Uh, how much are we spending on that?
It is seventy, the exact amount, I can't say, approximately seventy six dollars per metric ton. And we're spending. Hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year.
Wow, have those costs risen?
Substantially with fuel costs, it'll inspire to six years, but steadily, but fuel costs mainly has has increased, yeah.
Okay, so this saves us, um, you know, I'm looking at the eco-friendly part of this too, which is keeping those trucks off the road.
And and all the tractor work too, so those the CO two, CO two emission reduction was just in the truck hauling, it wasn't looking at the tractor. So the there's, it's a significant fuel savings and a reduction in CO two emissions by by going with this other alternative.
Right, thank you very much, I agree, it's a change for the better for sure, thank you.
All right, any other questions for General Lending right now? Okay, go ahead and continue.
Okay, then the only other component with CIP five is it retains space. Last week, council approved, uh. Let me hit that later, one other slide. So these are the, these are the approved or the recommended uh, CIP projects moving forward, and again, it summarizes the estimate project costs. And their approximate starting times, CIP one again has been completed, CIP five. Uh, we are looking or we are pursuing and moving forward with a design build to the Department of Enterprise Services. With a energy services, energy saving services company in train. They've been successful in three prior projects at the wastewater treatment plant. We will, so we, it's a way that we can utilize and develop a capital project while looking at achieving energy savings. And train will also be looking into grants from the college as well. So, so that project is moving forward. An investment grade audit, which will include about sixty to seventy percent drawing set. Uh, a contractor will be ready to go in approximately March in two thousand and twenty four. I'll be coming to council for approval to move forward with construction. Completion of design and construction of the CIP five biosolids project. CIP three is the liquid stream, that is the uh, MBR side stream project. That's that was estimated to be two thousand and twenty six, but that was a a twenty twenty estimate prior to COVID. And our reduction, our our growth or flows pattern has been reduced a little bit. Primarily, or obviously a lot of it with the reduction in growth and development in homes, but with the prison. Uh, their staffing coming down to seventy five percent. There, we're only getting about seventy percent of what we used to see from the prison, so our flows have kind of flattened out a little bit. So the trigger on CIP five is really flow driven, hydraulically driven, rather than a a deficiency or concern with the compliance issue.
Questions here?
Okay, next, and I essentially started with this, but we're we're moving forward with with train, Department of Enterprise Services with CIP five. Uh, and that IGA um, will be available uh, in approximately four hundred days from last week, so. I'm 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 hoping early two thousand and twenty four, we'll be able to move forward with that. And that's all, any other questions I've had to entertain?
Are there any questions from customers or anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Manager Landy. We're gonna now go on to the next item on the agenda. And that item is uh, discussion item seven point two, lodging needs assessment, HVS update, and we'll turn to Administrator Knight initially. Administrator Knight, go ahead.
Thank you, I I just want to give some kudos to John Landy, he's the only person I know that can make wastewater treatment plants seem extremely interesting. I personally love wastewater treatment plants, I have a fascination with them. But he literally could talk to me for an hour about wastewater treatment, I'd be, I'd be riveted. I also want to thank him because the introduction that he gave to the agenda item on the wastewater treatment plant is very similar to the agenda item that we're going to be talking about with the. HVS study, which is, this was a a study um, that was part of the Economic Development Advisory Board's. Original recommendations to council, so this is part of their. Six-year plan, their twenty nineteen through twenty twenty four plan. And the intent of this report is really not necessarily for the city's use, it's really a report that was written. Um, so we could market properties in Monroe for hotels, for franchise or boutique hotels. And so what Tyler is going to be presenting to you shortly is really the outcome of two phases, so. The first phase was really a a market analysis, kind of a supply and demand analysis. Um, of hotel properties that are existing in Monroe and hotel properties that are in communities adjacent to us. And following that presentation to council in June, then. Um, we had six sites that phase two was going to be looking at, and that was the feasibility study, so. We have these available sites and um, what type of lodging? Would we have demand for um, on those sites, so? This analysis took a look not just at hotels um, and boutique properties, but also RV sites. Which I think for the city council may present some baseline information that may be useful to us in the future. If we're looking at the CADMAN site, which the original master plan for that included RVs, so that'll give you some idea about what is the current demand. Um, for RV sites for yurts and that type of um, alternative lodging. Uh, sites that we might want to consider moving forward then into the CADMAN development in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Tyler. Um, Tyler has been working with our Economic Development Advisory Board. He's been facilitating those meetings and after Rich Heebner left, um. We turned phase two over to Tyler, so Tyler's done a great job kind of picking up and I'm carrying the ball to the finish line, so. Uh, go ahead, I'll let Tyler take the show from here.
Thank you, Derek, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Jody, if you go ahead and uh, go to the next slide for me, uh, I think Deborah did a really good job of laying out what the phases of the study were, so. We can skip through that slide and and move on to the next one, so with council approval, we're just gonna kind of review briefly. Uh, what phase one was, because I think it's very important to give context to phase two, so. Uh, one of the big parts of phase one was to look at our strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. Uh, we won't go into these two depths, but some of the strengths that Monroe currently has as a as uh, assessed in this study was a flourishing downtown community with restaurants and other amenities. Uh, we do have some uh, large tourism draws, including the Speedway, uh, the fairgrounds, our proximity to the North Cascades Recreation that takes place there as well as our parks and recreation. And then um, we are, so we also have draw based upon some of our larger retailers, Fred Meyer, Walmart, Safeway, Lowe's. Uh, some of the weaknesses that we have, uh, a lot of our uh, job population is supported by our Department of Corrections. Uh, we also are what is considered a drivable community in this study, so there's many people that would live, will stay on the east side towards the water, that might come to visit us, but aren't likely to stay the night. So it is, it is a weakness for us, and then unfortunately, uh, our current lodging is considered to be older and maybe of lesser quality. Yeah, that is obviously in the eye of the beholder. Uh, some opportunities that we have are for newer higher quality hotel. Uh, we do have some opportunities to maybe to develop some future sites for some of those uh, alternative uh, forms of lodging that Deborah had spoke about. And well as uh, the potential for expansion of of our tourist attractions, whether that's in the fairground or if we have more sporting. Events and arenas, the reason that that's important is that if we have sporting and events and things like that, that that tends to draw families and then they will stay because they might have multiple days of games for for their youth or things along those lines. So Jody, if you move to the next slide for me, please. Um, this is really important, uh, I think to note when when ingesting the whole study, so. Within that ten mile commutable distance of Monroe, with Monroe being the epicenter, there are seven, there are seven hotels currently assessed, and that makes up for two hundred and sixty seven room nights. And both of those are, sorry, all seven of those hotels fall in what would be the bottom two scales of the hotel uh, hierarchy of scales. So those would be economy and mid-scale, if we move to the next slide, we see that that number goes to six thousand five hundred and forty six, if you only expand that circle by five more miles. Uh, that includes uh, four scales of hotel that are higher. And so depending on what the individual looking for for that room night stay, there are a lot of options. If we move to that next slide to look at the map, because I think this helps us kind of digest that, and we can always go back if you would like to, but a lot of those areas where uh. Those other fifty nine hotels are are in areas that do have other tourist draws. Um, examples for this would be like wine country in Woodinville, so there are other tourist attractions and amenities that are already there that might attract people to spend uh, evenings in those places, so. As you can see that that growth goes up a lot, and so as us being a drivable city to these other areas. Uh, tourism attraction draw uh, be becomes a very big uh, weakness for us uh, in this study. If we continue to move forward, uh, this is also important, obviously, we had that uh. COVID nineteen pandemic, which uh, hopefully we're done with, uh, we never know, sometimes it keeps coming back and. But uh, in twenty twenty one, the line that dips pretty, uh, or sorry, in in twenty twenty, the line that dips pretty dramat drastically there, uh, shows that those occupancy rates went down quite a bit. Uh, especially seasonally. Uh, it's very hard to tell, and I wish this stood out a little bit more, but uh, when the study uh, was begun, we only had the first set of data for twenty twenty two. Uh, covering January and February, but as you can see, we are back to those pre-pandemic occupancy rates, or at least we are tracking in that in that manner. So moving to the next slide, uh, we are also tracking in that array of rates, we're not quite back to where we were pre-pandemic as far as when the study was taking uh, the data uh, about a year ago now. But we are tracking on those pre-pandemic uh, rates for uh, cost per night for a room. So, uh. Next one we have here, this is uh, this should be familiar to to all council members and everyone in this room, these are the five uh, hotels that we have in Monroe. Uh, they are all centrally located on the Highway two corridor. And when we looked at this, uh, the six sites do expand our general area a little bit further, so we will get into those uh, those. Six sites that we looked at here in just a second. But I think the final uh, the final couple of things to touch on from that first study, if we go to the next slide. Is that the demand, so in twenty twenty one, obviously that demand started going back up, uh, that is hopefully coming out of COVID and there was potentially some growth, but projected into the future, there is not a lot of demand. Projected for growth in the in our market segment. In essence, saying that we might be, we might have as many hotels in that drivable distance as are currently being supported by the population that we have, or is that is using those hotels. So uh, the next slide kind of demonstrates this as well as far as in rates. Um. Obviously, this one goes out a little bit further to twenty thirty one, but those occupancy rates really don't increase a lot, so. Uh, that they go from roughly seventy percent to seventy three percent. And that average daily rate, that's ADR, uh, really is only increasing by what would be a cost of living or a cost of good and services, there's not really a spike in what they project for the cost of those hotels to go up. Uh, the RevPAR is revenue per available room, and that is a metric that is used in the hotel industry by uh. A multiplying occupancy by the average daily rate, so if a hotel's not a hundred percent full, they have empty rooms, they are, how much money are they actually making in total for those rooms throughout? And so, if there's any questions on that, uh, I'll I'll go ahead and stop there, that kind of covers what phase one went through, obviously at a very high level. But then we can dump into, we'll jump into the feasibility uh, phase two and the six sites that were looked at, so there's no questions, Mayor.
Are there any questions up to this point? Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. So moving forward, here's a map of the of the six six sites that were looked at, um. We have uh, the Lake Ty site, the Airfield site, the Hanson lot. Uh, North Kelsey, East and West, or also referred to as one and two inside in the study, as well as the uh, High School Administration Building. So each one of these sites has different strengths and weaknesses. Uh, Jody, if we can move forward one more, but the conclusion of the study was that four sites are recommended to be the most successful based upon. The market parameters and the analysis of the study, and those are the North Kelsey lots one and two, the Hanson lot, and the Lake Ty site. Uh, these are, these are most uh, suitable for several reasons, uh, but. One of the main reasons uh, when attracting investors is obviously that rate of return. So the hotels that are are suggested on these sites would be a mid to upper scale limited service hotel, and limited service means things like they're not gonna have a full restaurant. They're not gonna have a spa, uh, things along those lines, uh, but they might have some other amenities that uh, a lower end hotel might not, and as well as the general. In the hotel industry, the general uh. Quality of the room is considered to be higher, so if we were gonna go on a star ranking, they would be a star higher. Uh, the North Kelsey, uh, both the lots come back with a return of uh, interest rate at ten point four percent. In the survey, uh, in the assessment, when they surveyed investors, they are looking for somewhere between a nine and thirteen percent rate of return. For a site that is potentially for investment. So this would fall, the all of these would fall in that, however, on the lower end of that scale. The Hanson lot has a ten point three percent rate of return and the Lake Ty lot has a nine point five percent of return. Excuse me, the Airfield, excuse me, and the administrative building were not recommended as the most suitable sites. You will see that the Airfield does have the highest potential for rate of return at ten point six. Uh, it is suggesting a uh, another level up, either an upper mid-scale or that decentralized lodging project. As Deborah had mentioned, that the centralized lodging lodging product could be uh, full service RV sites, that could be like a Yurt Village, something along those lines, uh. The reason that this is not recommended is because they tend to be based around leisure oriented areas or. Uh, regional destinations such as a national park, something along that, there's has to be an attraction that draws people to there, they don't tend to draw people on their own. So they also have other risks for investors, there's seasonal occupancy, and then there's also the feasibility for having uh. Uh, RV parks tend to have pools and outbuildings and restrooms, and so there's more investment that has to go in, and with each piece of those investment, there's more risk that obviously takes place. So therefore, uh, there was a lot of broad assumptions put on the airfield because that is obviously the largest site and a lot could be done with that, I know council has talked about the airfield a lot. But that it does have the highest potential, but also one of the highest risks according to the assessment. The administration building would be for an adapted reuse boutique hotel, it uh, has a return of investment that is below what investors would look for at seven. The administration building would be for an adapted reuse boutique hotel. It uh has a return of investment that is below what investors would look for at seven point eight percent currently. Uh some of the reasons behind that listed in the survey are uh when there are, they're always one off projects, so they're they're not a cookie cutter. We can just have a franchise, put one in. They're designed independently. There's often challenges with that when we're using an old building, whether that is something that needs to be brought to code or other things need to be brought to it. And then also they tend to uh look the area in which those are uh. Ideally placed needs to be in a very walkable area to a lot of other amenities that also hopefully draw those people to that. So. It is the lowest uh rated R O I in the study. As Deborah mentioned, this is a very uh objective study, not giving recommendations, just saying from an investor standpoint, from return on investment and feasibility, these are the numbers that they came up with. I do have five or six more slides that can go into each one of these sites and give its strengths and weaknesses and some of the ideas of of a chain or a hotel that you might put there. We can definitely skip through those and just kind of go to some of the conclusion summaries, but I will leave that to council and mayor to decide.
Council members, did you want to go through the detail, the materials and the packets? Hey, council member Fisher, um I'm sorry, council member Kenny. All right, let's go through them.
You you've you've seen a lot of this information before. Uh North Kelsey lot one and two uh as and actually all first four sites are going to be the first four that are are recommended, most suitable. A couple of examples of these are true by Hilton Town Place Suites by Marriott. Those are chains that uh all chains have different levels. This would be that. Uh mid to mid upper scale level that would uh limited service hotel that would uh go in there. The reason that these would go in there is that based upon our market parameters and other sites that would be similar to ours, they would be the most uh suitable and most likely to succeed. Uh they they would support, obviously, pretty much all of this. They would all support very similar things, being the fairgrounds, speedways, use sports and tournaments. Uh but they wouldn't necessarily draw room nights to the city of Monroe, and they would be in direct competition with our other hotels. So by putting this there. It would create competition for the current lodging products that we have. Uh Jody, if you can go to the next one for me, the Lake Thai site, uh this one.
Oh, um council member gamble's got a question. Go ahead, council member gamble.
So I uh if we could go back, because I I get that point that is being made, I guess the question, or it's always that chicken and the egg thing, right? Um because what I hear from some of our, even I know we've got um E T A, which. Is a part of the seven on seven league, and they travel all over the western United States. Uh and I know the 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 owners of that have have tried to host. Um and were talked about hosting before, you know, a tournament that would be here in Monroe. And I know one of the things that always when you talk about. Those type of tournaments or stuff, and I get it that it's, you'd have to have a lot of those, but that one of the limitations is because we only have two hundred and sixty seven rooms. You know, in the the in the area. So I just, if we're only looking at it on what it is today. Those bullets make sense to me. But it the whole concept of this is that you would be adding more so that some of these venues, which we already have in place. Would then have the ability to house more locally and drive more up. That makes sense.
That makes a hundred percent to me, council member gamble, and I think it's a great question. And when you stated the chicken or the egg, I think that's the important. Uh part here, because is an investor going to want that those options first? Or are they willing to invest first and then hopefully that those options develop? And some of the next sites. Uh some of their weaknesses also talk about this if we go to uh either the Lake Tire or the Hanson site.
Before we, before we go there, I guess the question that I would have is that, do we have any intel intelligence from? Uh the fairgrounds or different entities within our community that would maybe point to things that we are missing out on. Because of what we don't have locally, get it that we have the capacity. Within X amount of miles, if you if you grow the footprint, right? But are are there things that we flat out don't do just because we don't have it within the five mile, ten mile radius? I guess would be my question. I don't know if we have the answer to that.
Council member gamble, I do not have that answer. I will defer to Deborah if she has a uh any insight on that, but as far as uh the limitations that we have in that, I do not have that answer for this evening. My apologies.
No, it's all good.
And and I agree, as Tyler said, the the question really is, will investors come? With the existing amenities in place? Or to your point, council member gamble, you know, are investors willing to look at and talk to the fairgrounds and other event providers to ask the question? Who's not coming because we don't have adequate hotel rooms?
Well, what and what I'm suggesting, Deb, is that I don't, I don't know if they would, or or should we? Through economic development, be asking those questions so that we have that to help provide, if that makes sense, like hey.
Yes. Yeah, so I think in addition to just, you know, handing out this report, I think we do want to provide that context um to some of the franchise hoteliers who might be interested in Monroe as a site. And you know, this report provides them with that kind of basic information, along with the narrative that you're suggesting, which is. We believe that we do have events that could draw additional people, but they don't come here because we don't have the hotel rooms. Um anecdotally, what we've heard is that um people are comfortable with driving, you know, from Monroe, excuse me, from Woodinville or Bothell. Um to come to those events just because the drive is so short, right? It's six miles away or seven miles away. And and that drive is fine. Now, would they stay here in town if they had an adequate hotel? I think they would. Um and I think that's the narrative that we're planning to um provide to um interested franchisees.
Anything further, council member gamble? All right, thank you. Any other questions at this point? All right, thank you. Uh go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Jody, if we could move forward to the next site, uh the next site is the Lake Thai site. Uh this Lake Thai site uh is obviously currently under development right now, and so uh. May not be as feasible. However, it has a lot of the same uh strengths and weaknesses. It would support those fairgrounds. I think council gamble, council member gamble made a great point about uh some of the weaknesses that they that they state in this is that what is the potential for development in the fairgrounds? And is there going to be future development and putting a hotel in an area that would help fit that development? So uh once again, it would it would be unlikely to increase actual room nights as a standalone, uh but it could increase nights based upon the activity and the tourism that were available to it. Or to that area. And once again, the the same type of development is suggested on this site. Uh the Hanson site is almost identical to Lake Thai. Uh just obviously uh on the other side of the fairgrounds, a little further up highway two. And it has the uh very similar strengths and weaknesses. It would not generate room nights. However, there could be benefits based upon what the developments are in and around the fair site, fairground site, excuse me. Uh the airfield site uh is is the most unique of the sites and and the uh type of lodging that would be available on them. Uh recommended for upscale hotels or uh those uh. Excuse me, uh things along the lines of R Vs or the yurt camping. This would appeal to the fairgrounds and equestrian riders uh that often utilize those fairgrounds. Uh the the goals and and some of the risks that I I mentioned about this site earlier, when we talked about the return of the investment is that. Uh there is so much unknown to that site. There is so much additional development, so the investors do take on more risk when developing a site along these lines. Uh it is highly seasonal. And if you look at uh, it has a a much harder time filling its total uh revenue per available. Room night rates based upon its seasonality. So. Yes, there could be potential to make that return on investment for several months of the year. However, in certain months, in the winter months, it would be a lot more difficult to fill this type of amenity or this type of lodging.
All right, um just a second. Uh council member Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to uh make sure that going forward that. We know that there is a pretty big R V uh development up at the roundabout and Sultan. Uh that has been open now for, I think, about a year and a half. So I I feel like that at least needs to be. Um some knowledge that we have going forward in this discussion that there is um and they they have plans to expand. So I know it's it's not in Monroe, but I'm thinking about the winter use uh for skiers and people that outdoor adventure in the wintertime. That that is something up and running uh might be considered competition for this kind of a development. And uh they've they've got plans to expand it into quite a large development. So just something uh to think about as we discuss this and and think on it. Thank you.
I think that's a great point, and I do not believe, I know the exact site you're talking about. I do not believe that was included in this study. I don't believe it was open at the time data was pulled for this study. So. That is something that would be in addition to this study as it is currently.
Any further questions or comments from council members? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh the final site that we have is the uh the school administration building. This would be a boutique hotel. Uh it would support tourists, tourist events. It it is close to our main street in downtown. However, uh i in a site like that, it it they do have, there obviously is a lower return on investment based upon the market analysis. And uh they, there is. According to the market analysis, concern that based upon what is the development going to be in that area and what is going to be utilized for that hotel. Uh on top of just having that reuse boutique style hotel, which is a one off and does tend to provide more risk for investors. So. That is why it comes in at the lowest, and it does have, uh it also would not, according to this study, induce. Room nights for the city Monroe as a standalone addition. So that covers all the sites. So just some of the final conclusions from this uh from from the two phases of this site. That is very hard to see up there, and I apologize, but uh. Are the hotel market in that commutable driving area, according according to the H V S study, is very robust, and there are several areas that have tourist attractions and amenities. That people uh would be potentially driven to to stay that night, and there are a lot of rooms available. Uh. The site would suggest that to in to incentivize investors to increase, we the city of Monroe would need to increase tourism attractions and amenities. Once again, that's a chicken or the egg. Is is the hotel come first and those come, or is the those those tourism attractions come first? Uh several sites that we looked at in this are potentially currently unavailable or would need partnerships with other landowners. But uh few some future uses that we can uh have from the study, uh. Council member Kenny gave a great one is is looking at R V sites and what is available and what is around now. Uh and it gives some very in depth knowledge of the uh strengths and weaknesses of those potential partnerships. Uh whether that would be with someone like Snohomish County for the Hanson lot or potential investors and marketing forward, uh whether that's through the E Dev process or reaching out to hoteliers and investors. Uh the final piece of information that I think that this could be potentially useful for is uh just as we can move through our cop plan, which we're working on right now, and. I know Director Bailey and his and his staff are doing a great job of that, but just if if there is a site of interest, is it zoned properly and would it be available? Um when, if and when an investor uh for one of these sites was interested in doing so. So if there are no other questions, that is all the information I have for you tonight, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Uh any uh questions from council members or comments at this time? All right, administrator night, did you have anything further?
I I don't. I um really appreciate the work that um Tyler has done to summarize this very thick and and lengthy um and detailed report. Uh but certainly want to follow up as council member gamble mentioned to make sure that we've got the right narrative um that is packaged with this data. So. Um when we're talking to potential franchisees or investors, um we have a really great story to tell about Monroe and the reason why. Um somebody should consider locating one of these hotel properties in our community.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate the work on this, and uh thank you. Um all right, we do have a need for an executive session. Uh this is property acquisition person R C W forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection B. And um it'll be for an initial seven minutes. We will reconvene when the executive session is over. During the executive session, if we need to extend the time period, I will make that announcement to. Uh to clerk Wykoff, who will then make the announcement both in the lobby and also online for people who are um attending. Again, we will reconvene in our regular session when we are done with exec session. Uh there will be action to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting this evening. Uh so we are now in executive session at eight oh four P M. Thank you. All right, we are back out of executive session. I have no further business this evening unless there's objection. We are adjourned. There being no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.